It's got the flavor of a cocktail party going on out here. I gotta bang my gavel, maybe a few more. Thank you, sorry. Sorry to mess up the party. Thank you all for being here tonight. Welcome. It is 5:02 PM, May 1st, 2023, regular meeting of the City Council of Cape Girardeau. We will begin with the invocation by Pastor Zach Strong of Christ Church of the Heartland here in Cape Girardeau and then follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. So would you all please rise?
Let us pray. Father, we thank you tonight for this great day and this great evening. Father, we thank you for this great city and the privilege that you've allowed us to be citizens of. Father, I thank you tonight and I decree by your mighty hand that this is a powerful and growing community, that it is a safe community, a peaceful community, a place where its citizens will find great tranquility and grow together. Father, I pray for this leadership tonight. I pray that you will fill them with wisdom and grace for every decision that's made, that Father will see the betterment for its people, for the citizens of this community, and to only see this city become greater and greater. We give you thanks for that right now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and into the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We do not have any items in our study session tonight. We do have two presentations, and I will go down there to do those. Okay, first we have a presentation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Are there some folks who would like to come forward and accept this and represent? Yes, please, come on up and line up across here. Just welcome. All right, thank you for being here. I will read the proclamation and then somebody will need to say a few words. Prepare yourself. All right. Whereas there is a proven connection between good mental health and overall personal health, and mental illness affects almost every family in America. And whereas people with mental illness recover if given the necessary services and support in their communities. And whereas people with mental illness make important contributions to our families and our communities. And whereas millions of adults and children are disabled by mental illness every year, and only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seeks treatment. And whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help. And whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses. And whereas greater public awareness about mental illnesses can change negative attitudes and behaviors towards people with mental illness. Now therefore it be it resolved that I, Stacy Kinder, Mayor of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month.
My name is Wendy Eisen, the CEO with Community Counseling Center. This is Michelle Ramsey. She's the Executive Director of Community Counseling Center Foundation. We appreciate this. We know, we see every day that every one of us is impacted by mental health in one way or another, whether ourselves or a family member. And we are really trying to do the best we can to bring about awareness, and this is just another way to do that. So thank you.
All right, and we also have a proclamation for Local Government Week. Glad we have a crowd to hear this. And the group receiving this is already assembled, so. Whereas local government is the backbone of our democracy, the bedrock of our political system, and a testimony to liberty, freedom, and the right to elected self-government. And whereas citizens of Missouri rely upon local governments to deliver essential community services such as clean water, police, and fire protection. And whereas the continued success of our local governments in meeting the needs of our citizens is a key element in maintaining the overall quality of life in Missouri. And whereas the rich tapestry of local governments in Missouri is represented by thousands of hard-working citizen officials, many of whom serve without compensation. And whereas through education and awareness, the importance of local governments can be communicated to citizens, state legislators, and the news media. And whereas recognition of local governments' accomplishments will give Cape Girardeau residents a better understanding of how essential local services are provided. And whereas establishing an annual Local Government Week would focus attention on the need for strong, independent, and active local government in this state and recognize the valuable contributions made by residents serving their communities in public office. Now therefore it be it resolved that I, Stacy Kinder, Mayor of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, do hereby proclaim May 7th through the 13th, 2023, as Local Government Week. And I would, I'll just accept this on behalf of everyone here. I do want to take a moment just to say thank you to our city staff and our city council for personifying all of this. And it's really a joy to work with you all and to all the folks who actually are here showing up, advocating for whatever, week after week, as well as all of our residents who serve on local committees. That is an essential part of things as well, nonprofits, et cetera. So thank you, we're a great community and all of this definitely rings true. Appreciate it, appreciate everyone being here. Thank you.
All right, I'll jump in really quickly and just, if anybody was out and about this weekend, it was actually pretty decent weather, you probably all maybe were impacted by some of the traffic considerations for the Muddy River Marathon this past weekend. I just wanted to thank, especially bridging off of the Local Government Week proclamation, just thank the police department for all of the closed intersections and keeping people safe. Everywhere I turned, I saw some other, another police car putting it out there to make sure that everybody was being safe, all of the runners. So it's a great way to bring people into this community, an excellent way for people to experience downtown Cape Girardeau. And so I just wanted to thank the police department for that. So chief, make sure everybody gets a little, you know, thumbs up from me on that. They did a great job. That's it.
Mayor, I just wanted to commend staff and Officer Newton, the amount of information that is getting out now on social media and in general is amazing. And I know that a lot of residents can go to the City of Cape Girardeau Police Department's Facebook page, get information on crimes or shots fired and different things like that, and I just want to send kudos to Officer Newton.
Anyone else, council? No? All right, moving on to items for discussion. First, we will entertain appearances by people in the audience who wish to apply for advisory board positions. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak to the council about what you're interested in doing? Okay, moving on. We have the consent agenda review. Dr. Haskin.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, we have four items that we added to the consent agenda for your review tonight, seven, eight, nine, and 10. We'll start with number seven. This is an LNI agreement with Mississippi Butts, which will allow them to install and maintain an oval, double-sided sign at 609 Broadway. Number nine, this is a general services agreement with Midwest Environmental Studies for asbestos inspection services as needed. And of course, number nine, an additional general services agreement with NPN Environmental Services for asbestos inspection and services, again, as needed. And finally, number 10, council, we have the public improvements for VA Cape G subdivision are now complete, and the developer is requesting release from the performance agreement. Mayor, that concludes the consent review.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Haskin. We will move into regular session. Mr. Taylor, will you call us, do the oral call, please?
Mark List, Robbie Gard, Stacy Kinder, Dan Presson, Tamika Randall, Nate Thomas, Shannon Truppsel.
Here.
All right, thank you. Counsel, we have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Submoved.
Second.
Ms. Randall, any discussion? All in favor then of the agenda as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we have an agenda. We have two public hearings tonight. The first is a public hearing regarding the Broadway Theater Redevelopment Corporation Development Plan. I will tell you all a couple things. During the public hearing, if you wish to come forward, you may. I would ask that you wait, given the size of the crowd, if you would let me recognize you and then you would come forward, please do that. There were several people who called in to speak, technically for an item not on the agenda, but I noticed that several of the names here say Broadway Theater. So this would be your time to speak on that instead of at the very end of the meeting. This topic will also be under new ordinances, so there will actually be two periods of time in which we can discuss this. So speakers, if you come forward, you'll have three minutes to speak. And I can just tell you from experience, that's about one page of text. So if you're sitting there with like a 10-page dissertation, you're probably gonna hear the bell and get cut short a little bit. I'm sorry, but that's my job, so. And just to, so yeah, folks will have three minutes to speak. I would ask if you would consider, if someone has already spoken your, you know, particular point, that perhaps you would consider not needing to speak to that, just to keep things timely. All right, so moving on. Is there someone who wishes to come forward during the public hearing?
The three of us will be coming together, actually. It's okay. Good evening. I'm Liz Haynes, Executive Director of Old Town Cape. Joining me this evening is Brennan Tote, owner and president of Tote Roofing and Construction, and Dr. Stephen Hoffman, Coordinator of the Historic Preservation Program at Southeast Missouri State University. We want to again acknowledge that we realize that this has been a long journey, and we applaud the city council and the city staff for your willingness to take this journey with us, to envision the best possible future for our community. As was the case a few weeks ago when we presented, when it was standing room only and folks in the halls, the community support for this project this evening is again simply remarkable. To see this many people from all walks of life, from all parts of our community, taking time out of their busy schedules to be with us in this room this evening means something. This many people believe in this project and the opportunities it will bring to our entire region. And not only that, many of them feel strongly enough that they're going to share their support with you publicly this evening. As you know, we have been working with city staff to create a redevelopment agreement that would allow for the repair rather than the demolition of the Broadway Theater. We believe we have a solid proposal, which you have all seen. We have worked through all the details with the city staff, and we are ready and excited to move forward. For the benefit of those in attendance this evening, we would like to give a brief overview of Brennan's proposed project. I'm now going to turn it over to Brennan, so he can do that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm very excited about our potential for this project, and I look forward to getting started quickly if given approval this evening. As Liz mentioned, I'm gonna give a brief overview of each phase with a timeline attached to each. As we discussed, my plan is to stabilize the building in about 90 days, which would mean eliminating the safety hazard and the dangerous conditions that currently exist. Then immediately following, I'll work to complete Phase 1, which should be completed within 12 months. Now this phase will include the build-out of three storefront retail spaces and two upper-level residential spaces. We'll retain the historic elements of the building structure and restore the classic marquee signage. After completing Phase 1, my intention is to move immediately into Phase 2. Phase 2 will convert the theater flyhouse into eight luxury apartments with some rooftop entertaining space. The estimated completion time for Phase 2 is 12 months. Finally, Phase 3 will begin as soon as Phase 2 is completed. Phase 3 will convert the space into a smaller venue and build out three additional storefront retail spaces. Five additional luxury apartments will also be installed with a completion time of about 20 months or so. I have renderings prepared of what these spaces could look like, which I provided to each of you at our last meeting. I'd like to thank you again very much for your time and consideration of this project. As I mentioned before, I'm very excited about the potential next steps. I'll turn it over to Dr. Hoffman to talk about what he sees as some of the benefits of the project.
Again, thank you, Mayor and Council. We appreciate this opportunity. We believe that this project has many benefits for the city. First, by choosing the repair option to address the unsafe conditions caused by the fire rather than the demolition option will save the city money. It will cost roughly $150,000 to repair the building as opposed to approximately $300,000 or more to demolish it, which would thereby free up up to $150,000 for the city to use to address other important city needs. Choosing the repair option will address the unsightly conditions that currently exist and will open the sidewalk for safe pedestrian passage more quickly than would the demolition option. If the Broadway Theater is demolished, it will result in an empty lot with a large tax lien, generating no income for the city. Whereas if this redevelopment agreement is approved, we will retain a building that generates income for the city for years to come. The city has very little risk in pursuing this option. The costs of the repair won't be fully reimbursed until after the completion of Phase 1. The redevelopment agreement for Phases 1, 2, and 3 is fully in keeping with the many redevelopment agreements the city has approved in recent years. In many ways, this is no different than all the agreements that are already in place with other developers with robust safeguards to ensure the completion of all subsequent phases of the project. From a preservation perspective, this project preserves an iconic historic building in our downtown, a building both individually listed on the National Register of Historic Places and a contributing building to one of our National Register Historic Districts. Putting the building back in service will increase property values in the surrounding area and will increase foot traffic, further enhancing the businesses along Broadway. Studies show that the economic impact of a newly occupied one-bedroom apartment results in between $18,000 and $30,000 annually in new economic activity. Brennan's proposal would eventually result in 15 such apartments. Lastly, this project aligns fully with the goals and objectives of the city's comprehensive and downtown strategic plans, and it will result in a better experience for visitors and tourists and a higher quality of life for our citizens.
Thank you for that, Steve. Brennan's vision for the rehabilitation of the Broadway Theater benefits our entire region for the multitude of reasons that Steve just shared. And now I want to share with you why Brennan is the right person for this project. Brennan has an award-winning local business with an excellent track record and reputation, which he has earned through working with the public in a variety of ways in downtown Cape and across our entire region for over a decade. Two years ago, Brennan purchased a dilapidated warehouse building in our downtown district, rehabbed it, and transformed it into River and Rails, a flourishing, vibrant part of our district, which has attracted five new businesses to our area. Brennan was born and raised in southeast Missouri, and he is committed to helping our community continue to thrive by transforming our dilapidated, dangerous buildings such as the River and Rails Building and the Broadway Theater into vibrant, flourishing additions to our community. In fact, his success with the River and Rails Building only strengthened his desire to continue this revitalization work to enhance and strengthen our downtown community. Brennan's vision for the Broadway Theater creates more jobs, recruits new businesses, drives more foot traffic, attracts more tourism, fosters a more vibrant downtown community, and invests in a long-term economic development effort that will move our entire region forward. Brennan has a letter of commitment to complete Phase 1 of this project and strong interest from his bank in funding Phases 2 and 3. He is personally committed to completing all phases of this project and has the track record and the financial support to do so. In conclusion, we want to thank again city staff for working with us so diligently on developing this redevelopment plan and to city council for having the vision and the willingness to explore this alternative to demolition of the Broadway Theater. We are excited and we are ready to proceed with the next steps. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Who else would like to?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. You guys get paid the big stuff to make big decisions. To say you are paid a stipend is an exaggeration. I don't know if everybody knows how little you pay to serve our community. So that dilapidated building that Liz was talking about, well, I owned it. And I went to several people and asked what I should do with it, and they said tear it down. I didn't really want to do that. I had a bigger plan than what Brennan came up with, more elaborate, more expensive. It was too expensive. So Brennan approached us and showed us his vision, and I really liked it. And it still is that warehouse that'll last now for years and years and years. There may have been a few leaks in the roof. Would you agree with that? Again, an understatement. I like win-wins, and I know there'll be people in the city that say, hey, you're spending $150,000 that you don't have to spend, but as a non-practicing CPA, I can do the math. Instead of spending $300,000, you're gonna spend $150,000. I can't imagine actually that that thing can be torn down for $300,000, but that's one of the bids that you received. So I like win-wins, and this makes sense, and I think you, anybody who votes for this will not have to feel bad that they aren't using the city's money properly, because I think you absolutely are. I'm sure some, of course, will disagree. No matter what you do, about 45% at minimum are gonna disagree with you. And lastly, I'd like to point out that even if this only goes through Phase 1, we've got a stabilized building, we've got three new rentals, we've got a couple apartments, and I'll tell you, as a Realtor, I've been in a lot of buildings where the back of the building, the upstairs, they are a mess, and we'd like to see those redeveloped as well. And I think ultimately there are lenders that, you know, will make that happen. So I think it's win-win, and I'm totally for it. Thank you.
I'll go to the back of the room next, I promise. And I'm sorry, could you state your name for the record?
Yes, my name's Scott House. I'm from Cape Girardeau, and I'm most commonly associated with Fort D, which, to remind everybody, it did not have a roof for many years. When we first went there in 2005 to think about rehabbing the site, it was a terrible place to visit. The building was boarded up, the roof had caved in. It wasn't safe to visit. It was an eyesore in a part of town that didn't need another eyesore. But the city and the citizens invested in it. They put a new roof back on it. It has been a game changer, and instead of having a blank spot there that didn't attract anybody, we have visitors all the time. We're only there some of the time for events, but visitors come all the time. But even at just the events that we have, where we actually have a sign-in sheet, we've had visitors from 42 states, plus the District of Columbia and Puerto Rico, plus visitors from 19 other countries. So if you build it, they will come. And instead of having an eyesore in that part of town, we have something to be proud of. It has not only benefited the site and the city, but also the citizens in that part of town's perception of how the city manages to do something right. And so this is another example, I'm all in support of this. What have you got to lose? And look forward to seeing the Broadway Theater open again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Brendan Newbern. I'm the Executive Director of Visit Cape, and that's tourism, and I work with Liz very well. So I'm gonna take that journey a little further that she talked about, and it is just that, it's a journey. History has it that in 1921, we had the Broadway Theater built, and that has memories, and it has culture, and it has a lot of things that people thrive on thinking about when they're visiting a historic community. It's also our gateway, so can't you imagine this in your future, that this is what'll be there in the future? So I want to say to you, it's okay to change your mind. If you thought no, I thought no. I first thought it was an eyesore, it was unsafe, and I said, tear this thing down, let's put something new. But when I go from here to here and know that it's going to be a historic remembrance, a symbol of what was here, and it's our corridor, it's Broadway, it takes us right to our historic Mississippi River, so let's keep it, and you all have the power to do that. Thank you.
There was someone in the back that raised their hand a while ago. Yes, sir? Sure.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Mark Feynman, and I'm a member of the Cape Broadway Theater, a board member, I'm sorry, a board member of the Cape Broadway Theater. Our original goal, as you know, is to save this historic building and repurpose it as a performing arts center. Now, thanks to developer Brennan Tote, Old Town Cape Exec Director Liz Haynes, board member Steve Hoffman, and Cape Broadway Theater owner Suzanne Hightower, you have the opportunity to save the footprint and facade of this legendary property that's been an important part of downtown Cape's history. You've heard Brennan's redevelopment project, plans, I'm sorry, for this refased project, which will create jobs, increase downtown Class A office space, and offer upscale apartment living options, as well as new retail and possible restaurants. My goal, and the reason I'm here in addition to everything else I've said, and it is a goal, is to become one of Brennan's tenants in the third phase of this redevelopment project. Okay? Well, let me tell you what I want to do. We'd carve out an intimate, state-of-the-art 150- to 200-seat theater. We would call it the Broadway Theater Playhouse. It would offer year-round professional entertainment, live theater, to our community, business visitor school and church groups and tourists. We'd also offer internships and employment to theater, I'm sorry, SEMO theater art students as well as making the auditorium available to Cape's River City Players, other local performing arts groups, and business meetings and small conventions. In closing, the redevelopment project before you is a win-win, as we all know, for the downtown core, Chamber of Commerce, tourism, and business sector and all of Cape's 40,000 residents. Thank you.
Oh, how about you next, and then there's lady up front?
Well, thank you all for giving me a second to speak. I'm Kristi Mershon, currently the Board President of the Historical Association, and I know many of you very well. And if I know you well, you've probably been cornered at some point in the last three months for me to say, I need to know what you think about this, because I tend to be very tenacious. And just because people that I care deeply about support the project, I want a little more information. As a board, as the Historical Association of Greater Cape Girardeau, which operates the Glen House, we are the oldest historical preservation association in Cape Girardeau. And of course, my board and everyone that is involved with us is very much behind this from a preservationist standpoint. I also work in that corridor. Frankly, I pick up a lot of trash. Some of that trash includes needles. Rob and I from Annie Laurie's were out today picking up some various debris. I am deeply opposed to empty spaces anywhere along that corridor right now for that reason. I come from a building background. I was also a historic preservation student once upon a time and had my now 86-year-old father in that building. And so I was having a discussion with him about the $300,000 bid, and he said, the building that we were in the basement- And I walked in there with Kevin Priester and cried that we had gotten in bed with that building. I did not think it was viable ever. And the first time that I walked into the current businesses there, I cried again, because that, to me, is an example of what good renovation of a building. It's useful, it's earning revenue, they're exciting businesses, it's drawing people to downtown. I worked the River City Marathon, and it was packed, right? That's what we want to see. I have confidence in you, my board has confidence in you, and I hope that you guys are really, really considering this, so.
Well, I feel like I'm in the distinct minority here tonight, because I, I'm not a cheerleader for the building. Of, and I've made some points that I'm going to make. I think it's time to move on and tear down this old, dilapidated building. I don't think you, as the folks have spoken about the building itself, I'm not certain that when the developer who has never developed a building of this size renovated it, I'm not sure he knows what he's getting into. And he also, he's not doing it for his, for charity's sake, because he'll be getting tax abatements for approximately 25 years. And we know how that's a drain on various taxing entities. Number one is the school system. Structurally, the building, I feel, is unsafe, and it's a public safety hazard, as was, there was an article in this weekend's paper that talked about, just about that as well. 49.6% of 347 voters said that we should demolish it at city taxpayer expense, and 13% said they were undecided, and 37.5% said to work with private developers, so that, so the folks who want to move forward with it, they're in the minority. Also, I'd like to make another point. To my knowledge, Mr. Tote, I know you're a good, I'm sure you're, you're good at what you do, but I don't know that you've done a building of this stature before. There are too many what-ifs in this project, and it refers to the article that it varies phases, and I'm not sure about these phases, one, two, and three. Sometimes, these phases never get finished on time, they're always extended. And I know the city is not the best in the world at holding developers and contractors to what they are supposed to be held accountable for. Example, Veterans Memorial Drive, the city got stuck with not being able to collect liquidated damages. Person's construction took the city for a ride in this area, because I lived near there. Also, the airport hangars, the city got stuck with that. I think they had, there was a money drain there. Also, there are no assurances that this will be done in a timely fashion, and I think if a developer comes up and says, oh, I need more time, the city's been very, very, well, actually, they lean over backwards and say, okay, now that you're into this, we're going to allow you to continue on. So I think you need to tear the building down, raise it, fill it in, sell it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Can you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, can you state your name for the record, please?
Harold Tilly.
Okay, thank you.
Nobody's clapping. I don't understand.
I'm sorry. Brave man, Mr. Tilly. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Nancy Kennamore. I live at 119 North Ellis, which a little gravel alleyway runs between the Broadway Theater and my home. So I have a big stake in demolition or renovation. I do, I, I want to say thank you to the City Hall staff that answered so many of my questions along the way, Ryan and Trevor and Amanda. I, I do know Brendan, and I met his mom and dad, and I know they're really good people. So I trust in his word. I had a couple of concerns that he's going to talk to me about another time. I have concern about parking, and I have a concern about parking for construction. But if that, I won't have any concerns if those two issues can be dealt with. When Suzanne renovated, I had terrible experience with that construction company, but this is not the same company. So I'm, I'm on board for renovation, and I just want to express my opinion as a next-door neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marla Mills, and I'm, I live at Levin South former, just down the street, so I'm a downtown resident, as well as, I speak, I come up to speak with some historical perspective on this, because I was the Executive Director of Old Town Cape for 13 years, and it's been said by some that, you know, this is too little, too late, it, it's like the last, the last minute, and we waited till the last hour to try to save it, and I, I want to speak to that, because I know that's not true. For the 13 years, for all the 13 years that I was in that position, we worked and talked to many developers who were very interested in redeveloping that building, but, and, and I, I think, you know, it goes to, and Dr. Hoffman will agree with me, the best use for a building is the building, is the use that it was built for, and all the developers were trying to use it solely for that purpose, and that's what made it not work. And Brennan was creative, and he is, you know, I, I agree, I trust him, he has proven himself, but not only that, he, you know, we can say it was the last minute, but he needed the experience he's had in other developments to make sure that he was ready for this one. So, you know, maybe he was too young when it was, you know, when it, it was prime, but whatever the reason, Brennan is the right person, he has the right plan, and now's the right time. And I ask, you know, that you really consider letting Brennan move forward with his development and not demo this. And it, and the other thing I want to speak to, some, and you addressed it, Mrs. Kennamore, a little bit, parking, and that we can tear this down and build some parking for downtown. And we've never, I've never once in the whole time that I've worked in downtown development heard people say, I'm going to come downtown because there's parking. So my point to that is, and I'm, I'm saying that because we can't build parking, building parking doesn't bring people downtown, it's the events and activities that go on there. And so the same exact thing was said about the building at the corner of Broadway and, what corner is it? A fountain, and it's the Vasturling Building. And so there was a lot of movement with people even on the council at that time that thought we should tear that building down for parking. And now we have the Vasturling Suites, and we have a gathering space that houses events, public art, and that huge Christmas tree that we would all be sad if we didn't get to see it. So tearing down a building just for parking, particularly when that building is so critical to the history of our community, is, is the wrong thing to do. So I hope you'll pick the right thing to do, and I agree with Brenda, you can change your mind. If you thought this should be a no, change it to a yes.
Thank you. Good night.
Hello, City Council and here. As you guys know, I'm Dustin Duncan. I am the owner of De Duncan Forestry and Boutique that many of you guys have frequented. One thing I took away from the gentleman that spoke, he was very brave, I'll say that. I recently had a chance to speak with Brendan for the first time, speaking as a visionary, another visionary, I'm really nervous, I don't like public speaking.
That's okay. You're doing great.
But as a, speaking, I'm a visionary, and one thing I took away from him is what-if. I had a lot of what-ifs with De Duncan Forestry and Boutique, and we are very proud of the success we've had. We've had many people from all over, we've become a destination. Ben Trexler, you guys met last week, he's going to be my neighbor, he's going to be my neighbor. I know how to run a business, my husband, I know how to run a business. But what if we didn't have visionaries? Cape Girardeau wouldn't succeed. So my point is, is a visionary, a visionary, we have to have a vision for Cape. We have it, Brennan has it, but what if we didn't?
I, I had called on her. Do you mind? Can I get you next? Or, okay, yeah.
Good evening. My name is Ella Rhodes. I'm finishing up my freshman year at Southeast Missouri State University, and I'm also the work-study at Old Town Cape. And as we have all heard, the Broadway Theater is a beautiful and historic building, and it's a landmark of Cape. Its presence holds a lot of value and memories for thousands of our residents, and when we look at it as a landmark, its value is intrinsic. But I would like to point out another set of values from my perspective as a student. I would like to say, when, considering which colleges I wanted to go to, SMO was not the number one on my list, it wasn't even in the top three, really, but evidently, like so many other students, I chose to come here. And one of the main reasons I chose to come to SMO was because I wanted to come back to Cape. I actually grew up in Cape, and I moved away when I was 16. And the reason I wanted to come back was because Cape is such a vibrant and historic city, and it's beautiful. And I would like to point out that the Broadway Theater is beautiful, and it can be so much more beautiful and vibrant. And this is what makes our town stand out, you know, this is what makes it stand out to students, and it's what we look for when we see a place where we want to come. We want to come somewhere that's beautiful, and we want to come somewhere with innovative businesses and buildings. And we want new activities, and we have money, and we want to spend it in new places, and we want new places to live. But if it's, this building gets torn down, you will see none of that money, you will see none of the income that this building will generate, and you will see hundreds of thousands of dollars go down the drain as you tear this building down, as you turn it into a parking lot, and as you maintain that parking lot. And that parking lot will be ugly. And that parking lot will not pay for itself, it will evidently create a money pit. And I would like to pronounce that this building will pay for itself with student money, with tourist money, and with residents' money. And something else I see from a student's perspective is the safety. Parking lots downtown are pretty notorious, especially for young women like me. One of my friends actually was chased in a parking lot not far down the street. And I think keeping this building standing instead of turning it into a parking lot would promote safety, and it would make people like me feel much safer. And finally, by ending my time, I would like to remind you of the purpose of this government. You are by the people, for the people, to serve the people, and today you have heard what the people want. So many of us have and continue to stand before you and voice our opinions, and these opinions are strongly in support of the rehabilitation, it's what we want, and it's what so many of us here are here to say. And I would like to implore you to listen to the community and hear our voice. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll just have one or two more at this time, but.
I just have.
Can you state your name, please?
My name is Joyce Whitby. I live in the Old Schultz School, which was built in 1914 as the first central high school. It is a very old building, even older than the Broadway Theater. I live in a beautiful loft apartment with 48 other apartments that only cater to people over 55. What, I can't imagine, I've never lived in anything this beautiful in my entire life, and when people come to visit me, they, they almost all have memories of being in my building. And the first time my older children came to my apartment, they were squealing because that was Mr. So-and-so's history class that I was living in. And I just want to say how I feel about restoring these old, lovely buildings, and how much it improves our city to do something like this, and thank you.
Thank you. There's a lot, I tell you what, we're gonna, we're gonna do one more right now, and then we actually are going to have more time later in the meeting as well. Mary Ann? Sorry.
I'm Mary Ann Kellerman of the Kellerman Foundation for Historic Preservation, and obviously, I'm in to save an old building, so. I don't think there's any doubt when you see me coming up. We started working with old buildings in 1971, so 52 years we've been buying, restoring, paying for, and scrambling on old buildings. So I can't say enough, and I don't need to tell you what our philosophy is. I do, however, want to say a few things about Brennan, because we met Brennan back when we were restoring the Flag House, the Oliver Lemming House, and we had had a roofer that an insurance man pushed us to use, and that roofer ruined our roof. It had to completely be redone, so we had to pay for it the second time. So we met Brennan, he helped us, we compromised, we kind of did a trade of a little, and we re-roofed the Oliver Lemming House immediately before we had the 100th anniversary of the flag. Then he helped us, because there had been a hailstorm at about that time, so he helped us on the flat, the Fountain House, the Clark Kellerman House, which was a huge roof on two buildings, and he helped us and guided us through that and worked with the insurance people. So we owe him a debt of gratitude, but mostly, I want to say, I think he's ethical and honest and experienced enough now and old enough to tackle this project. So we obviously vote to save the Broadway Theater.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'm going to close this public hearing and open the next public hearing for tonight, which is to consider a proposed amendment to Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding A1 Airport District. Is there anyone here to speak to that? There were a lot of hands raised a minute ago, but all right. Okay, I will close that public hearing, and we will move on. We have a consent agenda before us. Mr. Young, would you please recite that?
Bill 2353, an ordinance approving the record plat of Southside Village. Bill 2353, an ordinance approving the record plat of Southside Village. Bill 2354, an ordinance approving the final development plan of Southside Farms Phase One. Bill 2354, an ordinance approving the record final development plan of Southside Farms Phase One. Bill 2355, ordinance permitting Chapter 17 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding urban deer hunting and the discharge of firearms. Bill 2355, ordinance permitting Chapter 17 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding urban deer hunting and the discharge of firearms. Bill 2356, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a license and indemnity agreement to place improvements on city property adjacent to 609 Broadway in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2357, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a general services agreement with Midwest Environmental Studies for asbestos inspection services in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2358, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a general services agreement with NPN Environmental Engineers, Inc. for asbestos inspection services in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
We have a consent agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Bliss, Mr. Presson, any discussion? All in favor, then, of the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. You want to post? All right, that agenda carries. We have nothing removed from the consent agenda. We have, one, two, several new ordinances tonight. So, okay, here we go again. During this, we will address each new ordinance as it comes up. Again, we will have speakers, our, members of the audience are allowed to, to make comments. I would ask that if you have spoken already, you do not need to speak again.
Bill 2354, An Ordinance Approving the Final Development Plan of Southside Farms Phase 1. Bill 2354, An Ordinance Approving the Record Final Development Plan of Southside Farms Phase 1. Bill 2355, An Ordinance Commending Chapter 17 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri Regarding Urban Deer Hunting and the Discharge of Firearms. Bill 2355, An Ordinance Commending Chapter 17 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri Regarding Urban Deer Hunting and the Discharge of Firearms. Bill 2356, A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a License and Demolition Agreement to Place Improvements on City Property Adjacent to 609 Broadway in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2357, A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a General Services Agreement with Midwest Environmental Studies for Asbestos Inspection Services in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2358, A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a General Services Agreement with NPN Environmental Engineers, Inc. for Asbestos Inspection Services in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
We have a consent agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Bliss, Mr. Presson, any discussion? All in favor, then, of the consent agenda? Please say aye. You want to post? All right, that agenda carries. We have nothing removed from the consent agenda. We have, one, two... Several new ordinances tonight. So, okay, here we go again. During this, we will address each new ordinance as it comes up. Again, we will have speakers, our members of the audience are allowed to make comments. I would ask that if you have spoken already, you do not need to speak again. So let's just jump into it. Bill 2359, An Ordinance Designating a Certain Tract of Land at 805 Broadway in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri as a blighted area pursuant to Chapter 353 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri and approving the development plan and a development agreement in connection therewith. This is the first reading. Mr. Polley.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Haskins, Council. This ordinance accepts the development plan and agreement for the redevelopment of the Broadway Theater at 805 Broadway. Do you have any questions? Very short.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, so at this point, members of the audience can come forward and speak. I would ask at this point, since we have heard an avalanche of those in support of this issue, if perhaps if there's anyone else who wishes to speak in support of demolition? Does anyone care to raise...? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Cynthia Mayer, and I came here on the other side, really thinking the time has come to tear it down. But from everything I've heard, I think you should give him a chance. It would be a shame to tear down the building if he can make it look as good as river and rails. And, but, as the gentleman said in the back, I would hold his feet to the fire, and I wouldn't constantly be letting, you know, things go. But that's where I came in tonight completely against this, and I changed my mind.
All right, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Strachey's coming.
I'm J.W. Strachey. I'm the demolition contractor. And if you guys vote no for this, you let me out of my contract. I don't care. But the front part of the building is beyond repair. I mean, you could parcel demo the front. Firefighter fell through the floor when there was fire on it. Could have been injured or killed. If you vote for this, it'll have to be put out to public for other people to bid on it. You can't just hand a guy $150,000. If he wants to do it with his money, I'm all for it. Let him do it. But, you know, if you're paying $150,000 for this, what's gonna tell you that the next guy down the street, "Well, I'd like to do the front of my building. You need to give me $150,000," and you're setting precedents? But I've done this since '79. Tore down the old Sunny Hill Garden Center 45... or Sunny Hill Dairy Barn 45 years ago. And we've done a lot of demolition, and it'll be done in 90 days. It's a very dangerous building. I won't even walk across the floor, and it's done collapsed on two floors. If it was savable, the only thing savable would be the middle part with the arches. The stage is rotten. You'll fall through it. The roof's rotten on it. It's 70 foot up in the air, the bricks, or that could fall off. It's been retuck on it once. But 90 days, it'll be gone. It'll be filled in with gravel, and then the next developer can come in, put in a new building, and it ain't costing you a dime. But, you know, whatever way you guys go, your contract is... My 90 days on my contract's up tomorrow, I think. And it'll be done for the money, and on filling it in with gravel, that's what I do. And I know what it's gonna cost.
Okay. To be accurate, it's your estimate for your demolition. We're not in a contract with...
Yeah, it's final bill, and you got...
The bid.
You know, if this is all under construction on them, are they gonna have to have liability insurance and everything on this building to cover? You know, because when you guys put the money out there, you guys are each funding this, so you make them personally liable if someone gets injured or hurt. Something to think about.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes.
Hi, I don't have anything prepared. I just came in last minute. I'm Rob Davis. I am one of the directors at Rad Studios. I'm for keeping the Broadway, but I felt like I should say something because I'm also part of Urban City Players. I'm very nervous. I'm not good at public speaking like this.
You're doing great.
Which is odd, being in the theater. This is a completely different ballgame than reading, memorizing a script. But I just want to, my past perspective, even having the smaller venue is something Cape needs, an indoor venue. There is not really many community venues here in Cape. I've been at past studios, dance studios, traveled to Perryville Dance Studios, traveled to Steyson. Why can't the 12 dance studios, or however many there is in Cape Girardeau and Jackson, come here to perform? This is where the families are. Like, why can we not help our own people get those opportunities? Our kids here that we teach, why can't they get that opportunity here in Cape and not have to travel 30 minutes away? So that's my whole spiel is, we need this for the students. We cater to homeschool students a lot. Those students don't get the public opportunities that a lot of students here do. I know it's choices that each family can make, but we still are there for our community, and we'd like to make sure that we have performance opportunities here in Cape. That's all. Thank you.
My name is Kent Ziegfeld. I own businesses and buildings in the downtown district. I started working in the family business in 1968. In 1972, I was asked to join the Old Downtown Merchants Association. Since that time, I have been involved in different business entities continuously. At present time, I serve as chairman of the Downtown CID. I'm vice chairman of Redevelopment Corporation. I serve on the Special Tax District, and I'm a member of the Old Town Cape Board of Directors. This is an interesting project. And go back historically. I've been here long enough that I see downtown when it was at its peak, when it was the epicenter for economics and retail in the downtown, in the Cape Girardeau Business District. I saw it gradually go and decline as all the majors either moved out or they closed. And I saw a time when people would come into my store, and they would say, "Why are you still here? Why haven't you moved to another section of town?" Well, the answer was, we were determined to see a redevelopment and a revitalization that all of us have seen take place over a long period of years. And I assure you that this revitalization didn't take place because we tore down. It took place because we built back. And one of the keys... One of the key elements in this building is, that's not the last building in downtown that needs to be redone. The Woolworths Building is in terrible shape. The Pennies Building has a tree growing out of the roof. There are buildings up on the north side of Main Street that used to house the old bazaar that are in terrible shape. But if a developer would come along and he could see Mr. Tote, take this building in the condition it is in now and revitalize it into his vision of what it could be, what could they do with some of those other buildings? Would that not be motivation for them to come in and say, "I can take the Woolworths Building, and I can make something out of that. I can take the Pennies Building and make something out of that." We're not done yet. This is not the end. This is just the middle. We have started. We are pushing forward, and we will continue to push forward. But we need to continue to recognize the fact that there are buildings that need to be rehabbed, and if somebody is willing to take them on, put himself out there and do it, instead of being discouraging to him, we need to be supportive of him. Thank you.
You, and then you, and then we'll wrap it up. All right.
I'm Steve Watkins. I'm a business owner here in Cape. I bought a dilapidated old building and moved back here. I was looking for shop space. And everybody told me, "Don't buy that building. It's falling in. It's terrible." Long story short, I built a venue upstairs. I have shop space downstairs. I brought over 1,000 individuals through that building last year. I brought individuals from California, Illinois, Missouri, Georgia, Arkansas, all around. And they came in because I built that building. That's the only reason they came in. Someone told them I had the space, and they came in. They looked at it, and they're like, "This is awesome." A lot of you have been in my building and have seen it, so you know what I'm talking about. I spoke before about the history, and that's been covered in spades. What I want to talk about, and it got mentioned twice, is vision. Mr. Tote, myself, D Duncan, we all had vision for what we wanted Cape Girardeau to look like. What I'm more concerned about is your vision, and what is your vision for Cape? And what is your vision for Cape? And what do you want Cape to look like down the road? And what is your philosophy for this town? Are we a historical town? Are we a progressive town? Do we care about growth? And do we care about having people come in because this downtown is important? I specifically bought my building and bought my location because I wanted to walk to restaurants, and I wanted to walk home, and I wanted to be part of this community because I think it is so cool and so awesome. I've lived in many historical places. None is as swirgle as this. I lived on the East Coast, and I thought when I moved out to the East Coast, "I'm gonna be in the really old part of the country." Nope. It's over here. It's as old here as it is anywhere, and it's as important here as it is anywhere. And I think we need to be responsible for that. I think it's important that we have a vision for where we want Cape to go, for what we want it to look like. I've got it. I know what I want it to look like, and I'm pushing. I've been self-employed since I was 18. And the reason I bring that up is, the only reason I'm still self-employed is because I know how to put puzzles together. And that's all I do all day long. Everything is a problem. Nothing is easy. Nobody has a plan for how I go forward except for me. And as soon as I form that plan, it changes. It's gonna change tomorrow. It's gonna change the next day. We're gonna have a pandemic. Prices of everything are gonna go up. I have to be creative. I have to think beyond something simple, and I have to think long-term, and I have to be able to pivot and move constantly. And I know Mr. Tote can do that. I've met him. I've talked to him. I had him over to my place. He walked through and came through.
I'm just giving you the...
You want me to wind it up?
Yeah. But you're on a roll. I'm sorry to interrupt.
I'm just getting in full swing.
I can tell.
So I think one of the most important things that we've touched on, but we haven't mentioned it, that is Zoned CBD, Central Business District. So what is your vision if it comes down? It's easy to say, "Hey, let's tear it down." And then, okay, now what? What is your vision if it comes down? Central business or business? And that means making money. That means bringing revenue in. That means tax money. And that means bringing people off of I-55 down into town. And I think that's important. I think we got some vision here. You got it here. I'm willing to... I put my money where my mouth is with my building. I'll put my effort where my mouth is now, which means if I can help in any way, I volunteer my time. I volunteer my brain share, and I volunteer my experience in any way possible. I don't have any affiliation with anybody here over this. I'm here on my own accord because I have a business, and I have my money on the line, and I care about what this town looks like. Thank you.
Last one. We'll have the last speaker.
I'm Ryan Lane. I am the chairperson of our Historic Preservation Commission here in Cape, so it's all your fault that I'm here because you appointed me a couple years ago. I'm gonna start with a somewhat ironic thing. Today is May 1st. Anybody know what starts May 1st? It's Historic Preservation Month. So if that doesn't guilt you into anything, I don't know what... I mostly want to talk on a couple of things, partly with being on the commission. Mr. Tote came and presented to us a couple of months ago. We were able to see what his exterior plan and the Phase 1 plan was, and the board unanimously agreed that what he showed us, if it was continuing in that direction, it would hit a lot of the standards that you need to see to maintain the historical appearance of the facade on Broadway, specifically what, you know, not that he's applying for, but what Shipbo would be looking for and what they would want to see the building if you're gonna consider it to stay a historical structure because obviously, there's a lot of reinvention of buildings, something of that size, of a lot of the downtown building sizes. You're not gonna find very many businesses that need that amount of space. And so being able to chop it up but keep the historical look is what's really important to modernize what we're doing in our community. So the board feels that it's a really terrific option and that the look of it is correct if he does continue that direction. The other thing is, personally, I'm from St. Louis. First North County, near Ferguson, their historic downtown. Then St. Charles with their historic downtown. You've been to St. Charles. It's probably one of the best historic downtowns in the country. A lot of years ago, when I was visiting schools as an optimistic track athlete, my recruiting dinner was at Dino's, got fried chicken and mojos, if anybody here remembers that. You know, that building's gone now. But the downtown in Cape, along with the university, is what attracted me to CMO versus a lot of other universities that I've visited. And so I went to school here. I left, taught in St. Louis, came back, left and taught in St. Louis. I've been back 14 years again. And I remember when downtown was dirty bars. I was in those dirty bars. Probably shouldn't have been. You know, Poorhouse is gone, and now it's Spectrum. If anybody here has fuzzy feelings about Poorhouse, you're wrong. Spectrum's way better. You know, my point is, I've watched the H&amp;H Building, the Marquette Tower, this building we're currently sitting and standing in, these massive projects that have completely changed the face of downtown Cape, and what I think is what makes the character and the culture of Cape. And I would love to see it continue, and that's all I have. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, we have a motion before us, Bill Number 2359. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Thomas, Ms. Randall, discussion? So now it's the council's turn to discuss and ask some questions. Counsel?
Okay, I'll start. Okay, so four stages or steps that I see here, and as I see as we talk about the council or the work I do with my organization or at the state level. Vision. Somebody has to have a vision. It's usually one or two people that have the vision. Second, you have to have support. So once you have a visionary like Brennan, then you get the support. The support is Old Town Cape, the historic, other entities that want to be involved to support the vision of one man or two or his business to do that. Three is resources. That's when you go to lenders, the banks, and other financial, finance institutions to get the resources you need to do something of this caliber. Four, you always gotta have results. What's results? The income that will come into this community, the impact of people that will visit Cape Girardeau and downtown. So it has to be vision, support, resources, and results. Since being on the council a year, this is the only plan or development that I've seen that takes it from beginning to end. But most of all, with those results, you have to work with the city that's been done. You have to work with the community. And you have to still continue to vision, to support, and to resources to be able to do that. As I visit other cities, we mentioned Atlanta, as I expand my organization, and as I hear Old Town Cape and other organizations, in order to grow as a viable place to live and advance, economic vitality is the result. Economic vitality is a process to improve the economic well-being of the community that protects the physical environment, provides a health, healthy economy, encourages employment opportunities, improves social economic opportunities for citizens, expands the local tax base, facilities, economic opportunity, and encourages. So this is for businesses as well as different projects within the community, and that's the ultimate goal. And that is what the city and the state, as well as many aspects. So I am in favor. I'm an Old Town Cape liaison, and I am in favor of this project and moving forward and making a difference. And I'm glad that someone had the vision for us to support. And we, as a community, I hope as a council, be able to see... And we as a community, I hope as a council, be able to see fit that is carried out.
I just. Oh, go ahead.
Sure, I'll go next. Mr. Puley, may I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes, ma'am.
The last time this property was brought for a public hearing was in September of 2021, was it not?
Yes, ma'am.
And at that time, an inspection was conducted by the city.
Yes, it was.
And it was declared that 40% of the building was damaged to a point where it cannot be salvaged, including water, water lines, electrical plumbing, so on and so forth.
For the inspection, yes, ma'am.
Since that.
I'm sorry, Shannon, when you say building, are you referring to the entire structure?
To the whole structure, yeah. So since that time, are you aware of any city inspector that's entered the building to conduct an additional inspection on the property?
I'm not aware of any, ma'am.
So while we have close to nearly two years of this property, including the open, the roofless space, we continue to have damage to this property?
The front, front section, yes.
Correct. And the front section is the area that Mr. Tote wants to stabilize as part of Phase 1?
Yes, the stabilization is the front part of the building. And then you go move into Phase 1 of actually completing the front section of the building.
Correct. And part of that stabilization process would require either raising or, or doing something to the foundation, I assume, to make it safe?
The actual foundation would probably still remain the same. It would be shoring up the walls, putting in new doors, putting in new windows, new roof, making sure the exterior of the building is safe. And making sure the interior from the front of the building to the second part of the building is secure also.
Okay. Is there a possibility that that front end of the building cannot be stabilized?
The front portion?
Yes.
I have not personally seen everything of the front building. I would have to speak with a lot of the contractors that went in there, Mr. Tote. Our inspectors have been in there two years ago. I've been in the building. I've seen portions of it. I did not examine the walls nor the foundations.
Okay. So, and if, Mr. Tote, if you have any information to add to this, you can add to this. Do you have an engineer's report about the front part of the structure that it can actually be salvaged to the point where you can stabilize it? Is there an engineer's report that you have available to the council that you can present to us?
Thank you. The, what I have is my inspection of the building based on my construction experience. I have not yet hired an engineer to look at the building, although we, we certainly have plans with architects and engineers to enter the building barring this proposal being accepted. However, I can tell you this, that we inspected the building and based on my construction experience, especially with the River and Rails building, is in very similar condition. And I was able to see the steel girders that are in fine condition. I was able to see where the brick part of the front of the building is falling away. And I understand the level of re-brick, re-masonry and re-tuck pointing that's needed there. I certainly understand all elements as it relates to the roof and the substructure of that roof, as well as the floor joists that need to separate the first and second level. I did get a chance to inspect the concrete, the thick concrete between the basement and the first level there, which certainly seems to be in good condition and better than the condition of the River and Rails building whenever I acquired it. So without the input of an engineer, I was able to, from my perspective, look at the front of the building and feel like I could put together a proposal to stabilize what are really some good bones. They do need some work, admittedly so, especially on the front brick part of the building where it is being supported now by some stabilization bars. But the internal structure, the concrete and the steel girder trusses are in good condition and I feel like the building could be stabilized.
Thank you for that information.
So when, immediately after the fire, Suzanne had a structural engineer look at it and their recommendations were to take that front wall down to the windows and rebuild from the windows up. So it was not that the whole thing had to come down, but that sort of that, that, that top part of the wall, which is tipping forward, would need to be rebuilt from about the window lineup.
Okay. And that was in April of 2021. It is now May of 2023. And where I'm getting at is weatherization over two years, things have changed. I assure you. So I would feel more comfortable if Mr. Tote had an engineer's report to settle my uncomfortability about the project and the being able to be stabilized. Not done yet, Mr. Puley. Part of our ordinance under Chapter 28, there's a subsection in there that requires a financial commitment or what we would consider, based on the council's review, is that the proposal would satisfy the financial commitment for the entire project.
That's what the, your council members need is determined, if you, if there's enough financial support to do the project. That's what you determine.
Correct. And at this point, we've only received a commitment letter for Phase 1. And your office has not received any other financial figures for any other phases.
I, I received the same thing you have. I forward, I forward everything to you regarding that. But the economic portion is what the council determines.
Thank you. No more questions for you? I think what is important to, to say here, Mr. Puley, thank you for that input, is that, and I, and I don't ever speak on behalf of the entire council, but I, I would argue that each and every one of us would like this project to actually succeed. That there isn't one person here that wants to tear down a building when there's an option to actually have a vibrant renewal of a downtown space. The problem that council has before them is to, one, verify that you can financially and effectually complete all phases of this project. And two, do we spend taxpayer dollars to provide financial assistance to an individual that does not yet quite own the property, only would own the property upon execution of this agreement? And also, if the project fails, we are still in the same position under a demolition process. My, my other issue that I have is that we need to make sure that we are doing the best that we can with our ARP funds, which these, these finances are coming from our ARP funds. This is not a revenue stream for tax dollars for streets. I know there's a misunderstanding. I get emails quite frequently, at least the last week, that this is a revenue stream that we have. This is not. These are ARP funds that were designated when we voted over a year ago. The funds are in place to remove the hazard in the, the, the building so that it becomes safe. And it is my opinion, and I think, I, I think the rest of the council's opinion, that at no point in time when we work with developers, do any personal or city taxpayer dollars go to a developer upon developing a project. This would be the first instance where we would be providing financial assistance in the redevelopment. I am not talking about tax abatements. I'm talking about cash. That is my hesitancy in this, but I fully support your vision. You have it. I fully support that the willingness, and you wouldn't put yourself through this process unless you really believed in it. And the people behind you wouldn't fully support you if they didn't believe in you. It's not, again, it's not a question of whether or not we want you to do it. We have two questions that we need to satisfy based on ordinance of whether or not we can do it. And that's where I'll leave that.
Thank you. No. I'm sorry, no. Counsel's deliberating right now. Any other? No, I'm sorry, Mr.. Sorry. I'm sorry.
I, I would just, I would just add that I agree with Councilperson Truxell. I've said from day one that I would vote yes for this if you could come to council with a commitment for all three phases. We disagree. That's fine, Brendan. I hope, I wish you well. You know where I stand on this. So, good luck.
Mark, anyone else?
Well, I just say I, I agree with Old Town Cape and most of the people here. I think this is a very good project. I think we do need to save buildings. And I have every confidence that he's going to be able to get the financing for this. I have talked to other people in the financial community who say that it's not uncommon for a bank to give a letter in support of the first phase. But that doesn't mean they're not going to provide the second and third phase. They want to see the first phase done before they get the funding for the second phase. I believe the developers on the West Park Mall project do not have all their funding in place for that. So.
Let's just keep it.
You know.
Let's just keep, let's keep one project on the table for.
Well, okay, but I'm just saying, there are other projects. And, you know, I, I, I personally think that the financing is there. And I, I think the renovation of the downtown is vital for this community. And tearing it down, first of all, it's going to cost more than money to tear it down. And second of all, you end up, like they said, with a parking lot. And I don't see that as, as being a, a, a good outcome. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
Nate?
Sure, I'll speak. Those that know me think, know that I know, or know that I think very practically and analytically. And I've had a lot of time to chew on this one, as this is now the third time that we are taking it up for vote of the many hoops that we had to jump through. I just want to reiterate some facts in that analysis. And one is that, you know, the city is only interested in this in the timely manner that it is because of the safety concern that was because of the fire. That safety concern then started the path to where we, we have a, a standard operating procedure where we then condemn the building and then proceed down to demolition and demolish it. And that was how we were headed. I had a very similar line of thinking as Mr. Watkins in that, you know, my question for anybody that would in our consideration of this, what is your goal for this property? What is your vision for this property? Because we had that option for demolition, but now we have two very distinct options that are going to head on very divergent paths. One is to destroy it and demolish it and tear it down. Mr. Tote, very thankfully, I said at one of the council meetings, he came and we can say it's 11th hour, it's too late. We're, we're too impatient. We're, we're fed up. We're frustrated. Let's tear it down. Let's proceed down the demolition path. Or now we have an innovative option that, yes, we have to think outside of our box and the box. And yes, we have to think innovatively, but isn't it worth it? Because the two very distinct options we have is we will tear the building down. Well, let's back up. Both options involve, well, we have one option that involves investing a considerable amount of taxpayer dollars to a private entity to address a safety concern on the building. An exorbitant amount of money. To demolish it for that private entity, so that then we can place a lien on that property that we have, there is no legal precedence in the whole state of Missouri of forgiving a lien of that size. So therefore, it creates a property that is undeveloped, that is unmarketable for any developer to come in and spend $300,000 to $500,000 of a lien against it. So therefore, the only interest is for the city to then take it over potentially from the current private owner. And what are we going to do with it? Where are we going to come up with that money? Or we have the option to invest less money, considerably less money, to create a property that is going to restore all the good things that everybody said before. The tax abatement issue, to me, that's a moot point. Because if we tear this down and it becomes public property, there's not an ounce of tax coming off that property. Whereas you create residences that people will live in, they pay personal property tax. You have business, you have sales. You have all of those that'll go on, the people that'll visit, that come into town, that'll eat other places. That is what the economic impact is. So two very divergent paths. So when I look at this and I look at how I'm going to analyze, or I analyze it and look at how I'm going to vote, I look at it, there's four main reasons that I look at because, or there's quite a few more. But the four high points are, this is an opportunity for us as a council to walk, not just talk the talk, but walk the walk of being able to cast that hard vote. Because I can sit up here and tell you that I'm a fiscal conservative and this is a good steward of your taxpayer dollars. But it's hard for me to invest more money to create a property that we're going to forever be paying into. I would be able to, with my vote to demolish this building, I'd be able to promise you that building is going to come down and Mr. Strach is going to do a heck of a job doing it. But I will also promise you that for the rest of the time I'm up here and for the rest of the time that anybody else is up here, we are going to be writing a check with your taxpayer dollars to maintain that property into perpetuity, forever, continuously. And I'm going to pay more money to be able to do that. So to me, it doesn't make financial sense. The rest is, we like to say that we're developer friendly. As a council, we're development friendly as a city and we want to see people come in and invest their development dollars into our community. I wouldn't, to me, creating a property on our prominent downtown corridor that will forever not be able to be developed is not development friendly or a good economic decision in my book. The rest is, we like to say that we, but we lean on our strategic partners, our advisory boards, our commissions. The advice that they give, the guidance, the expertise that they have to extend our capacity as a, as a council to make wise decisions on behalf of the city. It would be a slap in the face to those very passionate, involved people that believe in the merits of this project, of those councils and those commissions that came up before us, for us to then say, thanks, but no thanks. We're going to go elsewhere. And so the other part is the public safety issue. As we're all talk about our commitment to public safety, we have seen what downtown vacant, vacant parking lots on our downtown streets attract on weekends, on weekday nights, on all hours of the night. It's a safety concern. You go to any major developed vibrant downtown city, as has been stated before, downtown community, there aren't parking lots on the main downtown corridors, especially not on a prominent corner. There are two to three blocks off. Yeah, you need to have parking. Yeah, you need to have some street parking. But we don't take a vibrant downtown corner block and turn it into a parking lot and then say that we're for downtown development and revitalization or pro-public safety, because that's going to create even more public safety concerns as the young student earlier brought up. So I guess that's my timeout here. I will just reiterate. Thanks again. So what is the goal for our project? We have someone who's bringing an innovative opportunity. We, to spend less, create a vibrant, to, to everything that everybody has said. And just to reiterate some of the good points I heard earlier, if you build it, they will come. I've never heard anybody say, if you tear it down, they're going to come. And it is a symbol. It is a symbol of here in Cape and our history, but it's also going to be a symbol of our future and what we are currently and what we are becoming and that we embrace our past and turn it into a future trendy, high-end place that is going to attract people to come in and live and set roots and start their businesses and build off the momentum that we've created with decisions like this that make good economic sense going forward. So that's my piece.
All right. Thank you. Okay, I'll, I have a few questions and first of all, I, I do want to start out just by saying, I am not aware of a plan to build a parking lot. Dr. Haskin, we are not engaged in any parking lot?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. All right. I would assume you would know. So just, that's been discussed a lot in the, in the development plan. You know, there, there are three options that are discussed. Demolition, renovation with no incentives, renovation with incentives. And we've gotten a lot of data and information about that. And, and by the way, I would like to take this moment to thank Mr. Tote, to all of your supporting organizations that are helping you, to our city staff as well. Because there has been a lot of time by all of these groups and many more, you know, to put, to try to put as much data and as much information together. And it's, it's been very, very helpful. But I would, I would suggest that those aren't the only possibilities. I guess, yes, it's, it's fair to consider that a parking lot could happen there. But if this building is demolished, that would then be a lot that could be sold and developed in some way that we haven't even discussed. So I just, I just want to make sure everybody understands that that is, that is a possibility. Um, Mr. Tote, I have a few questions for you, if that's okay, um, some details, um, just trying to, to sort them, some things out. So, um, obviously the, 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 the notion or the, the, the goal has been to save the Broadway Theater. And, and by the way, um, obviously there's a lot of passion for that concept. Um, definitely appreciated. Uh, I think, uh, Shannon and I definitely would agree. There, there's no one here who is intent on demolishing in a historic structure. Um, it's just having to weigh all the, all the different issues that is causing some angst. So, Mr. Tote, um, if the, if the goal is to obviously save the Broadway Theater, um, can you explain why that's the last phase of your three-phase project?
Uh, I based it to be the last phase because it was what I consider to be the largest footprint. And from a construction viability standpoint, I thought that, uh, leaving it as the center section, it could be used as a staging area for the two developments. So it was actually just simply logistical. Um, however, I have had some discussions with, uh, some financial institutions that actually have interest in moving, even moving into that phase more quickly. Yeah. So it could, could potentially be considered, but it was just strictly for, uh, logistics.
Okay. That's, thank you. I appreciate hearing that. Um, secondly, then there have been a few questions asked and answered already, so I'll skip. Um, as, as others have expressed, um, I, the one thing I'm hung up on is not having the, uh, the financial commitment for phases two and three. Can you explain why that is or what, what the situation is? Um, wh, why your bank has committed to phase one, but not phase two and three?
Sure. Yes. My, my dialogue with the bank, uh, has centered around an enthusiasm for those additional phases, but because they are not slated to start for some time, the bank and, in my opinion, understandably so, would like to move forward with those phases. They've looked at the numbers, they like them, but they would like to see phase one completed and stabilized first. And I frankly am in agreement with their, their concept and I feel the same way strongly that I would like to have phase one completed, stabilized, and the, the bank has given no indication that they wouldn't then be prepared to enter phase two and phase three with, with enthusiasm. But I didn't really even.
Financially stabilized or just stabilized? The project, the?
Yeah, the project to be stabilized.
Final is, fin, financially, right?
Yeah. So for, so for example, we would like to have, uh, tenants that are moving into those spaces before we would, uh, yeah. And Robbie will tell you too, we had the same dialogue that, you know, we had a preliminary discussion and the numbers look good, the numbers work on paper, that's why I felt like the project was possible. But I didn't feel comfortable asking even for a bank to firmly commit to a, a phase that I knew was going to be potentially 36 months away or so. But I did ask them and I told them strongly, I don't even want to entertain a, a partnership on this unless you're seriously interested in all three phases. And, uh, the bank reiterated that they did feel strongly about a commitment to those phases as well, uh, pursuant upon the phase prior to the one starting being, being completed and stabilized.
I would also like to add, just to that point, because I've heard that point made and to me, it, I'm not a banker, um, do quite a bit of banking, more than I would like to, but, um, anyway, um, to me, it'd be very speculative from a, from a standpoint of a bank, given the fact that, one, the time, timeline and what, and we've all seen the economic whirlwinds that we've been through the last, you know, just the last three years and what prices will be and as it goes. Um, but then also you have revenue generation coming through your tenants and through occupancy and how that's gonna look. So that would then firm up what that actual per forma is from there forward to base that decision on. And to me, it's a decision of, we don't even hold ourselves to that same standard because if we apply that logic to our own Pago taxing methods, we would, we should not even consider TTF because we don't have that money yet, but we're committing the project, so we don't have the financing for it yet. So if we apply the same logic, then let's tear every street down because we don't have the financing right now, as opposed to actually waiting till we get the money to then decide when we can do the project, how we're gonna do that project and when the exact financial statements are gonna align to, to be able to do those projects. So it's not out of the realm of, it's not something ex, extraordinary or, um, odd to be able to say, hey, I have the interest of my financial institution, I just don't have it written down in an actual committed loan document because we're gonna see how the first phase looks and we go from there and incremental financing. So.
I guess though, to my point, Dan, is that on, in precedence, on one building.
Nate.
Nate, whatever. Sorry, he's better looking than you anyway.
I agree. I second that. Um, I, my, our thing is though, like with one property and the size of this project's three and a half million dollars. So it wouldn't be uncommon, the dollar amount, to get a commitment for the whole thing. One. Two, on the Marriott and the Marquette and the Plaza, on pre, on properties that we have done similarly to this, we have had a commitment in the file for the entire property. With the, the Marquette that, uh, that, that Mr. Cole talked about, well, when we, when we entered into that agreement, the last page was a commitment for the whole dollar amount. So it's not out of the realm for us to ask for a commitment for the entire project. So it's not, I mean, I don't want to act like this is out of the realm, we've done that on numerous properties. Yeah, I'm not saying that's not out of the realm, I'm just saying it's not out of the realm to, for the bank to be like, hey.
On one property on that, it seems, I, I question that. I, I, I think that if, I, it would be nice to have it all.
Well, and I'll just, I'll just add, uh, like Shannon said earlier, um, I'm, I'm hung up on, on our ordinance, um, under section 28, urban development, where it states, "A detailed statement of the proposed method of financing the redevelopment, including evidence satisfactory to the city council, that sufficient funds are available for the entire development proposed." So that's where I'm, that's where I'm hung up. Um, certainly I, I would, I would have had much more confidence if, if a bank is, is, you know, including a commitment letter for, for all three phases. Um, as Robbie said, the, you know, the numbers aren't extraordinary, the size of the building is, I mean, it's a very unique building, but, but in terms of the, the scope of the project, I, I don't know that it's, um, you know, super extraordinary. Um, it, and it, maybe this analogy, the analogy I keep in, in my head, um, and this is something I, I wanted to present, you know, kind of throw at the council. Um, thi, this is not the only building slated for demolition. We have a large number of, of buildings, much smaller in our, in, in the city that are slated for demolition, mostly, uh, you know, small houses. Um, we will, we, we know there will be a, a great number of, of others added to that list as well. Um, if you just drive around town, you, you understand that situation. What we have started doing is, is creating a fund, um, to actually deal with, with those demolitions. And, and we added the, the hundred, the, the money, the ARPA funding to specifically take ca, take care of the, the Broadway Theater because we knew it was going to be a, an extraordinary number. Um, so where our mind has gone is, is questioning the, the precedent that we would be setting. Um, if we, uh, give you or any developer a large amount of money in lieu of that, in lieu of our de, demolition, that, that's what you're asking, that's what this agreement is asking, is for us to take the money we would have spent, or $150,000 in this case, we would have spent that on demolition and we're going to give it to the developer. So where, where my mind has gone is thinking about all these other properties that we have slated for demolition and wondering if this is going to set a precedent to anyone who, for example, wants to, you know, sees a, sees a house, uh, you know, downtown somewhere that, that they know is, is slated for demolition. Are we going to be approached? Could we be approached by folks who say, hey, city, um, I know you're going to dedicate $10,000 to demolish that building. Um, I prefer that you, why don't you give that to me and I will spend it on, you know, rehabbing one-third of this house? Um, and then.
I'll, I'll address it in two points.
Is that a, is that a, yeah.
I'll address that in two points. One, that precedent is already set with the small buildings because a large percentage of the time, the lien that we place against them, we forgive.
Yes.
So therefore we're using that taxpayer dollars and not getting an ounce of it back. We're investing it into a private contractor to tear it down for a private entity. And then when another entity comes up and wants to purchase it, we forgive it. So that, so therefore we are, we are, we are investing, that precedent has been set. The second precedent, because this has been brought up before.
We're not, we're not giving them cash, though.
We're not giving, no, not giving, but it's essentially taking it off their, their price that they would have to pay for when they purchased the property. So whether it's a, a actual exchange of hands of the cash, or whether it's just the fact that that cost of tearing it down, nobody paid for but the city, then yes. The second part is I've had this conversation with some people who have talked about the precedent too. I'm like, yeah, it's a precedent. The next time that there is an historic huge building in the middle of a downtown corridor that is condemned and gonna be tore down, then yes, let's go back to this drawing book and we have a precedent. So I don't think it applies to every small property. The problem is that it is the exorbitant amount of cost of the way this is tied into the other building, the huge, the huge, um, size of it, the enormity of it, that's where the precedent is, is, it's not in every other little, we already have that precedent for every other little house as they go forward. And if any other, and I've had other developers talking, they're like, well, we'll be talking to the city when we have the next, please, please, if you want to invest $3.5 million into, yeah, let's do, and save us from having to spend into perpetuity, then yes, yes.
One, one thing I wanted to note too, will it set a precedent? Okay. But that's how things evolve and elevate. That's one. Two, in regard of that, everything is a case by case basis. I, I get so many people that come and say, hey, we can do this. But how many people, I don't know how many months you put in for work going through with this. I mean, you got the, how many developers, organization, historic committee, city council, city staff, the media, anybody you name, I don't, that's the precedent. That's the precedent of uniting a city. And when Dr. Hassan came here, that's all I see, united city, progressing, advancing our city as a whole. Not special interests, not small groups, not my friend that I have coffee or cocktails with, no, it's a city. And so our, our focus, which we all agree to disagree, but economic vitality, economic development, economic impact, uniting the city, not just city council work and not just city staff work and not just organization, not just developer, a united city. So you know what's the precedent? I haven't seen a united front for different entities to want to make a city better. That's our goal. We can start here, then we can go to the mall, you know, start in South Cape, those properties in South Cape, and I'll talk to city about that too. That's the precedent. And thank you for setting a precedent and I hope the council will see the signs.
That's the other part about, the other part about the precedent, the other part about the precedent too, is what if Mr. Zickfield, who was up here earlier, if he had a catastrophe in his building that was uncovered by insurance, are we just gonna take the middle of down street, downtown Main Street and completely just tear it down and create a, a parking lot? Because we don't have a precedent set of being able to work in a public-private partnership to redevelop these. I would hate to see a whole downtown block of Main Street go because we're unwilling to, to yield as a city to meet people in, in, in a public-private partnership.
Well, I, I'll just end with this. I, I, I'm concerned that if, if bankers haven't signed on to this entire project, I, I'm asking why this, the city should. There's, there's just red flags i, in my mind about that. And that's just something I just haven't been able to, to get over. Um, no, and by the way, I, that is absolutely no judgment on you and your abilities. It's, it's just the, how the financial, you know, numbers have been presented and all that, so.
I, I would just like to mention that, um, I have a tremendous respect for each one of you and I, I welcome the constructive criticism as well as the support. Uh, I do have confidence that, that I can complete the project and I, I feel like that as each phase progresses, it will stand on its own merits to, to prove such. But, um, I appreciate your consideration of it and I, I've said this from the beginning, the first day I walked into the theater, this needs to check all the right boxes for everyone involved, the city, the historic side of things, the, the citizens. And I felt like, and, and maybe it was naive on my part, but I felt like I was providing a solution, uh, to a problem. I certainly did not, uh, did not mean in any way to cause any divisions, but I, I
Oh, we argue all the time. Don't worry. Problem.
But I, I am, I am a very appreciative and I, I hope that we can, uh, we can complete this project and, uh, you know, check all the right boxes for, for the whole city. And thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Dan, unless you have something, I think we will call the votes. Um, all those then in favor of bill 2359, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you want to raise your hands for Mr. Taylor? Okay, thank you. All those opposed, please say aye. Nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Resounding applause. We actually have other business to conduct tonight, so, um, we will pause for one minute. If everyone would quickly and quietly exit, if you would like to, please do so now. And your voices do carry down the hall, so just keep on walking. Thank you.
Good to see you, girl.
Yes, sir. Thanks, appreciate that. All right, folks, if you're gonna leave, please do so. Bravest man in the meeting. Thank you for being here. All right. Come on. All right. Well, this is an interesting situation. We now have bill 2360, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Strout Excavating LLC for the demolition of the Broadway Theater in the city of Cape Giraffe, Missouri.
I have a question.
Mr. Pulli, yes.
Would it be appropriate procedure to make a motion to strike this?
I think we have to just, I think we just have to.
Vote aye?
Yeah, it's on, it's on the agenda and.
Gotcha.
So, Mr. Pulli, I, I doubt you're gonna say more than you did last time.
You're right. I will not say much on, on this one. This ordinance is to issue a contract to Strout Excavating for demolition of the Broadway Theater at 805 Broadway.
Okay.
Any questions?
No. Uh, is anyone, I hate to even ask this.
It's a, it's a resolution, you're not required to.
No, I'm not required. Okay, thank you. All right. Um, we will then just, uh, council, anybody need to say anything? Okay. All those in favor then of the, of bill 2360, please say aye. Aye? Well, aye or, if you're in favor of demolition, I guess. It doesn't. It, uh, we just need to register a vote.
I had one, Kai, I just wanted to thank Mr. Struck for taking the time to, to investigate and analyze the building because I know it was not easy and he spent a lot of time doing that.
I bid on it.
Yeah.
Because I told him, I said, hey, I said, it's gonna go through or am I wasting my time and money?
Well, you saw how close it was to not.
Well, um, okay, I think we're. Okay, thank you. Um, all right. Uh, is there, council, is there a motion to approve bill 2360? Did we get that on the table? I don't think I did.
There's no motion.
There's no motion. Is it because it's a resolution?
Second.
I'm so sorry. Okay, no, we don't even need that.
No, you need a motion.
Oh, there wasn't one made. Okay. She, Truxell and Preston, any further discussion? All in favor then? All in favor then of authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for demolition with Struck, please say aye. All right, anyone opposed? Nay. We're all opposed, okay. All of us are opposed due to, okay, thank you. All right. Bill 2361, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding A1 Airport District, first reading. Mr. Schrempf. I think we have to, yeah. Let's, let's stick with procedure, we can whip, we can whip through this, I promise.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is an ordinance that amends the A1 section of the zoning code. The A1 covers our, the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. And we're basically amending it to make some adjustments to account for the current terminal project. The, the proposed building exceeds maximum height, the A1. So we took this opportunity to make sure that our code aligns with the project. I worked with Katrina to do a review of this, of the entire section. And we made some other adjustments that are more just kind of clarification, things like that. But the main change is just increasing the maximum height so that the, the new terminal will fall within that.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to comment? All right, hearing none, council, is there a motion to approve Bill 2361?
Second.
Mr. Bliss, Ms. Randall, any further discussion? All in favor then of Bill 2361, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 2362, an ordinance approving the record plat of EOC subdivision, first reading. Mr. Schrempf.
This is a subdivision plat for a property at the corner of LaSalle Avenue, 55 Veterans Memorial Drive. It splits one lot into three lots. One of the lots is to be owned or owned by the county for their new emergency operations center, hence the name EOC subdivision.
All right, thank you. Is anyone from the audience here to comment? Hearing none, then council, is there a motion to approve Bill 2362? Dan, Robbie, any count, any discussion? All in favor then of Bill 2362, please say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 2363, an ordinance vacating Griffin Farm First Subdivision in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading, Mr. Schrempf.
This is a petition to vacate an entire subdivision. This is a little unusual, usually we're, we're looking at vacating a, a street right of way or an, or an alley or an easement. This happens to be an entirely blighted subdivision. It's next to Notre Dame High School, which as you know, is all farm fields, so there's nothing there. It's unimproved. And the owner has requested that, that entire subdivision be vacated.
Okay. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to comment? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve Bill 2363?
Second.
Mr. Preston, Ms. Randall, any further discussion? All in favor of 2363, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. And lastly, Bill 2364, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau relating to urban redevelopment, first reading.
This is just to change the definition section in our code pursuant to state statute. State statute has changed and so we're just updating our code to match that.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience wishing to comment?
Yeah, what is it, can you explain it a little bit further? Update what? The statute what?
Well, it's, it's in the information pertaining to the, the council. Basically, a new definition.
Correct, the definition of blighted area is, the wording of it has slightly changed.
The definition of a blighted area has changed a little bit in the state statutes. And we're just adopting, adopting those, that updated version.
So what's state statute looking at?
Well, so-
Chapter 353.
Chapter 353, urban redevelopment. Council, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Preston, Mr. Thomas, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. We have one appointment tonight to the Board of Adjustments Advisory Board. And the person selected by the council was Gary Hill. Is there a motion to approve, Mr. Hill? Mr. Gard, Mr. Thomas, any further discussion? All those in favor of selecting Gary Hill for the Board of Adjustments Advisory Board, please say hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? All right, Gary Hill is now on the Board of Adjustments. Thank you very much. Under other business, we had one person sign up, Mr. Ostrowski. Sorry? You haven't signed up for this part of the, part of the meeting, I'm sorry. I can talk to you after the meeting.
Hi. Hi, you're good Lisa, thank you. Yeah, okay, Andrew Ostrowski, 134 Wichita Circle Board. The invitations were out for the presentation, as I would have, okay? Out to trains, bus, transportation, that's number one. Number two, people, different people in the city are talking about how to compensate the employees. Why don't we think about, got all these vacant buildings that we can then redoing them and let that be part of the compensation, so we haven't always raised the salaries? I know of a university that does it and a diocese in Arizona, New Mexico, that does it for teachers. Okay, that's, and number three, on the south side, all these homes being run down. We have all these people wanting to develop. Want to say for every, for units you put in, you have to redevelop one of those homes. Because I see developing, one, one part of Cape, but other part is falling apart. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate the time. We have no other items on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve adjournment and moved into, and move into closed session for legal actions, causes of action, litigation and confidential communications with legal counsel and leasing, purchase or sale of real estate pursuant to revised statute of Missouri, Section 610.021, Paragraphs 1 and 2?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Ms. Randall, Mr. Thomas, any discussion? All those in favor then of all that I just said, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we are now adjourned and we are moving to closed session. Thank you all for your attendance.